Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the DeKalb Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for this Monday, September 15th, 2025. Could we start with a roll call, please, Olivia?
Becker. Fellowbaum.
Here.
O'Flaherty.
Here.
Kenney Graham.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
McMahon.
Here.
Chair Maxwell.
Here.
Quorum present.
Thank you very much. Move to the approval of the -- excuse me, on the approval of the agenda. If there are any additions or deletions. If not, I will ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Wright. May I have a second?
I have a second.
Seconded by O'Flaherty. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We're moving to the approval of the minutes from September 2nd, 2025. Again, if there are any additions or deletions. If not, I will ask for a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Moved by McMahon. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by -- I apologize, Fellowbaum, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This is the public participation portion of the evening. If anyone has anything that they would like to speak to that is not on the agenda, you may step forward. If not, we'll move to new business. We have a public hearing, a petition by James Hartwig for approval of a variance to the Unified Development Ordinance to allow a six-foot-high privacy fence to be constructed in a portion of the front yard along South Second Street for the property located at 129 Wendell Place. I believe Mr. Hartwig has a presentation.
Hello. My name is Jim Hartwig. This is my wife, Clady. I'm a local insurance agent here in town, and then Clady works for the police department. We have three kids, ages 15, nine, and two. So I'm also part of the National Guard. Since we moved into the house -- yeah, I'm gonna go back a little bit before that. Since we moved into the house, we always thought it'd be neat to have a fence. When we moved in, we had two dogs, two kids. Now we're up to three kids and one dog. I don't know if that was a fair trade, but we are where we're at. So over the past four years or so, we started saving money for a fence. I was recently deployed to Africa, which allowed us to have the funds to actually move on this project when I got back in July. And so we started going through the process. I didn't realize how big of a fuss this was gonna cause, so I apologize for that. But when we were planning the fence, our number-one thing was safety. We didn't want anyone getting in a car accident or a kid getting hit. We do understand, on a corner lot, there is a variance process, and that's why we're here today. So we decided to go 11 feet back from the front of the house and four feet in. That accomplished two things. One, it followed similar variance requests that had been approved in the past, and we didn't want to ask for anything that hadn't already been approved or been brought in before you guys. And then taking that 11 feet back, that just improved visibility when you look left at that stop sign. I did take some amateur photos. Dan will get there real quick. Yeah, so it's a little hard to see, so I -- at first, I drove a six-foot stake into the ground, and then I highlighted it with a red so you could see a little bit better. But that's me parked at the stop sign on the corner of Wendell and Second Street. I made sure that I was behind that first white line. I understand people creep up, but we want to be as conservative as possible when judging this. So when you're sitting at that stop sign, you can clearly see everything to the right of that red stake is Second Street all the way up to Taylor. So we believe that this is not gonna cause an issue with safety at that stop sign. People will be able to see kids walking to and from school. They'll be able to see cars coming north on Second, south on Second. It's not gonna obstruct anyone's views, and then that was confirmed by, I believe, the interim city engineer. Yep, he did an analysis, found that the fence wouldn't obstruct anyone's view looking The reason that we want to enclose the east side of our home is on the west side. There are some obstructions. There are three large trees. Yes, we could take them down. It ups our budget a little bit more on this project. We do have the money to put up the fence, but not necessarily enough to prepare our property and then put up our fence. And then also, on the backside of the house, there used to be a patio. We had that ripped out while I was gone. Our future plan is to put a deck in to the left of the left red line. It'd kind of take over where the patio was, and that leaves us about 13, 14 feet left of backyard. The yard on the east side, even coming in four feet, would be about 21, 20 feet wide, so much more space for my kids to play, the dog to run around. So that's why we like to enclose the east side. Also, on the west side, there is a little staircase that goes down to the basement. We're not a huge fan of blocking that in with a fence. We think that any exterior door should be open. I should be able to run out there and get out of my house as quick as I need to, or get into it. You know, I shouldn't have to monkey with a fence to get in there. And that's about all we have in terms of our thought process behind it, what went into planning. I just have one request. You know, we just hope that the judgment on this variance request is based on technical merit and not popular opinion. We do understand there's a lot of opposition. We've listened, and we get it. You know, we're not that thick-wary. It's like, ah, well, screw them. No, like, we get it. I'm just trying to do what's best for my family, for safety, privacy, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hartwig, we have a staff report.
Yes, in your packets. So we've seen a few corner lots, variances on fences, the last few years. Again, the requirement is any privacy fence, it's a solid fence, actually over three feet, cannot be in the yard on the two adjoining streets of a corner lot, so South Second Street. They could put a six-foot fence straight in line with the house, straight north, and that's the closest they could get to South Second Street. So the variance is an encroachment into the yard here on South Second Street. They're showing four feet back. Talked to the applicant early noting the past ones at four feet back, but it's a matter of, you know, how far into the yard. Each lot's different, as we've seen in every corner lot. This lot has some similarities in a few others, in some others which I'll go over. It's a little bit different in terms of width. It's not as narrow as some of the others. But that was the request. The house is 25 to 29 feet from the edge of the right-of-way or sidewalk. As mentioned by Mr. Hartwig, they're going 11 feet back from the edge of the house and start the fence all the way around. So the variance is in this area. So wider view is showing a lot in the other corner lots up and down South Second Street. Shape a little bit different. Some are more longer in length than width, but that gives you an idea of the neighborhood and the lot sizes and shape of those. The lot itself is about roughly 80 feet by 125 feet, about 10,500 square feet, which is small for a corner lot compared to newer subdivisions. This is platted in 1950s, the subdivision in this area. As the applicant went through the reasoning for the fence, they want the fence to include more of the yard, related to children and dogs. There is large trees here on the west side. Does limit the usable rear yard. We did look at the -- as mentioned, we did look at the visibility issue. First of all, that's -- we have in the UDL the side-distance triangle, which you'd take 25 feet from the intersection, the sidewalks back each side, and then connect, and they're not within that. We also did -- the applicant provided a photo showing there's no visibility problem, and we had the city engineer review this also, and they sent people out to take a look at it. They indicated there's no visibility issue with this. And this is a photo I took at the stop bar, and the edge of the fence, southeast corner would be in here, you know, behind the sidewalk, four feet away. As you can see, there's plenty of view to north along South Second Street. There's no visibility issue with turning on Wendell Place onto South Second. I did note a few of the recent variances. Here's some street view, showing the home, side of it, looking north. That's looking south across Wendell Place. A few of the others we have approved on corner lots. 857 South First Street, pretty wide lot, 100 feet at the fence here. They were approved at 10 feet back with some landscape screening buffering the fence. This is at 1158 South Fifth Street, was approved at four feet back. Lot width here was 50 feet. Last summer, approved a variance for four foot back, 960 North 12th Street. That lot width was 44.65 feet wide. And 928 North 14th Street, variance four feet away also. That lot width was 51 feet. So three of the lots had -- were narrow compared to the subject lot. So the findings are drafted in favor of the recommending approval of the variances. The standards are laid out there, which I've kind of gone over regarding the past approvals. The corner lot being kind of unique in terms of loss of usable area. And we did receive quite a few comments from neighbors, and I'll just mention the names and addresses, and if they were in favor or not. The vast majority were opposed to the variance. And those that we received prior to the agenda being posted Thursday was from Nancy Parch, 924 South Second, James Cunkel, 1011 South Second, and, excuse me if I mispronounce any name, Joe and Laura Lundgren at 1014 South Second, Susan Petrus, 117 Wendell Place, and Adele Pentilla, 111 Wendell Place. I did receive one email in support of the variance from Brandon M.A.K.T.H.E.P.H.A.R.A.K.S. I'm not sure how to pronounce that. 923 South Second, he indicated support. Variance since the agenda was posted Thursday, we did receive objection emails or letters from Frederick Quadi, or Quade, 1004 South Second, or Shell Quadi of 10 --
Quade.
Quade, sorry, 1010 South Second Street, and Timothy McMaster, 121 Wendell Place. Also, received today before the deadline at noon, a couple were -- had signed a petition that already submitted something, but I'll go through those. Joe and Laura Lundgren had previously submitted something. They had additional information. They're at 1014 South Second. Don and Jacqueline Collin, 903 South Second, objecting to the variance. Had a letter, some photos. Letter from Sharon Rhodes, Realtor, a broker at Century 21 Circle, 901 North First, objecting regarding damage to property values. And then two letters stating the same thing at the heading and signed by various neighbors. A few of them had already submitted items, but Nancy Parch, 924 South Second, Ron LaHorn, 930 South Second, the Lundgrins, James Cuckel, the Quadys, Gianna Bertzos, 204 East Taylor, Diana Frederick, 126 Wendell Place, Steve G.U.A.D.A.G.O.L.I., 118 Wendell Place, Tom Becker, 122 Wendell Place, Megan McWilliams, 114 Wendell Place. Others were had submitted already. So those were the comments from the public. So as you know, the commission, you have the final say on variances, approve or deny. So you have some options. You're gonna, you know, review or approve what's requested being presented, or deny what's being presented. You could approve with conditions in terms of moving the fence, recommend moving a fence further back, or the north-south distance, reducing that. You can, if you think there's further discussion possible, you can continue a hearing to our next meeting. If there's indication to deny what's being proposed to you, the findings are in the affirmative, so if you have linkling to deny it, you're gonna come up with findings that would be against approving the variance. So you'll have to do that with comments, and if you want to do that, I probably would recommend you provide some feedback and table it where I could go back and do it up like I did in the report. It's pretty clear and, you know, concise. It's a little hard to do on the fly to do something like that, but that's -- the commission's prerogative.
Okay, thank you, Dan. We have three people that have submitted requests to speak. I think these are in the order that they were received. Susan Petrus.
Hi, Susan Petrus. I live at 117 Wendell Place. I've lived there for over 60 years, so I know the neighborhood well and the neighbors well, and I know Jim and his family very well, too, so I totally sympathize with the desire to have a privacy fence, especially with a dog. Life is so much easier when you have a fenced-in yard with a dog. I do get that. But based on some pictures that Jackie -- I think that you have them in your packet of an AI drawing of how the fence would appear on Second Street, it's definitely gonna block views. It's what people are gonna look at when they look out their windows on Second Street. The people north on Second are gonna look south and just see a big, what I felt, you know, I think it's gonna be an eyesore. It's not gonna be in fitting with the neighborhood. I think it's gonna really stand out. And I know, Mr. Olson, I had a question for you in the background analysis that you had online. It said that the proposed fence will not alter the character of the neighborhood, and I just wondered, like, how you came up with that.
Well, I think we look at, you know, some of the other variances we approved with the fences in the corner lot, and those, many of them met with neighborhood approval. There was no objections, and many of them been approved. We haven't heard of any complaints from neighbors on those, so although it's intrusion, you know, it's into the yard, we didn't feel that it was gonna really damage the impact on, you know, the neighborhood or the character of the neighborhood with the fence proposed by the applicant at that area.
I personally disagree very strongly on that aspect of it. And I also, I understand your safety study, but I'm retired, and I see all these kids. They go to school down to Lincoln and to Honey Middle School. Those kids are riding bikes. They don't look at who's coming through Wendell. There's a lot of traffic on Wendell, who people are cutting through from Taylor. They don't want to stop at the stop sign, so they cut through our street. Some of them are rolling through. Kids are running backwards. I mean, I see it every day, and I just, I don't think that a fence that close to the sidewalk, even if it's set back somewhat from the house, I think it could cause some problems and be a danger to the kids. I understand that that part of the house facing north is the clearest area, you know, for your yard, but that's what your neighbors are gonna look out and see. They're gonna see all fence, and it's, I don't think it's a nice view for them. If it was the only option, you know, I could understand, but if that side were moved in, even with the house, I think that you could get neighbors on board with that. You know, the trees are old, they've been there longer than me. I'd help to trim them. I mean, the bottoms, all you gotta do is trim all those bottom branches off, and you'd have all that space on the west side for the kids and the dog. The dog would like some shade, I'm sure. I just, I think that we could hopefully come up with a compromise that everybody would be happy with. So, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Petrus. The next is Jackie Collin.
Colleen.
I'm sorry, Colleen. An O for two.
I'm Jacqueline Colleen. I live at 903 South Second Street, two houses up from Jim and his wife. Regarding the opposition to the variance request, I want to say, dear commissioners, I believe you have this in your packet, but I would like to read it. We are writing in response to the request for variance submitted for the property at 129 Wendell Place in DeKalb. After reviewing petitioner's request, we strongly believe the criteria necessary for granting a variance have not been met. For lack of demonstrated hardship, the petitioner has not shown any unique hardship that justifies this variance. The property is already an ample size, offering 3,100 square feet of open yard space. This provides more than sufficient room for children and pets to play safely without altering the zoning rules in place. The impact on the neighborhood character, the proposed fence would be incompatible with the established neighborhood aesthetic. Our community is defined by open front yards and a cohesive streetscape, and allowing this fence would disrupt that character. Such a change could negatively affect the appeal of neighboring properties to future buyers. Zoning regulations exist precisely to preserve consistency, protect property values, and ensure neighborhoods remain attractive for generations to come. Granting this request would not only change the character of this particular street, but it would also set a precedent for similar variances across the city of DeKalb. If ordinances are ignored or loosely applied, the long-term result will be diminished property values and the gradual erosion of neighborhood character citywide. Regarding community opposition, the concern is not ours alone. We are submitting a petition signed by 17 neighbors who also oppose this variance. Additionally, we have included photographs, I think you all got your photographs, to help illustrate the visual impact this fence would have if approved. Also, I have a letter, I have attached a letter from a real estate professional. For all of these reasons, we respectfully urge the commission to not deny this variance request as currently written. There may be opportunity to change a couple of things up that would then not be as, what's the word? Wouldn't be as intrusive. So ordinances exist to protect the integrity of our neighborhoods, and we ask that you uphold them in this case. Thank you for your time and consideration and continued service to our community. We do appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Petrus.
And then I do want to read this letter. To whom it may concern, this letter is in response to the proposed installation of a six-foot fence on the corner of Wendell Place and South Second in DeKalb. This is a letter from Sharon Rhodes. I have been a licensed Illinois Realtor for 50 years. Placing a six-foot fence extending from the side of the owner's garage to within four feet of the sidewalk on South Second Street will be a definite eyesore to the neighborhood. Being an eyesore will greatly affect the property values of homes in the immediate area and the entire subdivision. The home directly behind the subject property will only see a fence when they look out their window, affecting the resale value of their home. Likewise, the homes located across Second Street from this home will lose property value as they look at a side yard fence. Placing the fence as requested will affect the appearance of the Broad Park subdivision, changing it from a welcoming neighborhood to a closed-in, industrial-looking setting. Allowing this homeowner to extend toward the sidewalk instead of building from the back of his garage will set a precedence for other corner lot owners in the community. Please don't allow this to happen, as it affects our neighborhoods and our property In the petition that was signed by 17 of the local people, we did state in there that we would, well, we asked that it be denied. You have it, so I won't read it, but we asked that it be denied, but it's, we say we would, however, agree to compromise with the petitioner's request of the six-foot privacy fence on the east side of the property, provided it be adjacent to the current structure. And then I just want to make one comment. Our houses, there's only one house between our house and theirs. Their house faces Wendell. Our house faces Second. They're almost identical in size. Ours, 10,00618. Their's, 10,00579. Both are listed as a .24 acre. Their lot, 125 by 80. Ours, 140 by 75. Their house, 64 wide. Ours, 61 wide. Usable backyard, according to the map, 27.3 deep. We only have 10 feet behind our back door to our backyard, so we actually have no backyard. We have two areas. We have Taylor Street, our property there. We have what I would call our side yard. So they're very comparable. My husband raised six children, always had dogs. We had that one side yard. That's all they had. That's the only area they had to play, and it worked. Well, there was a pool. There was, that was before me. So we, yeah, we only had, the usable yard that we had was 54 wide and 45 deep on that side of the house. And I'm assuming, I don't know, Dan, did you put my pictures in so those could go up on the?
I did get them in the PowerPoint, but all the commission members have your letter and your pictures.
Well, I really encourage you to take a good, hard look at them. As Sharon said, it would be an eyesore. I truly believe that. Jim, I don't remember your wife saying, "I want you to have a place for your kids to play." I want the dog to have a place to run. But I truly believe that if you make a little bit of accommodation, do something with the trees, that you will have sufficient room without affecting all of our property values.
With all due respect, if maybe we could table that until after the discussion, simply because I think there is maybe room for compromise, so. Would you have one more speaker request for him?
I'm done now.
If I may?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Adele Pantilla.
Hi, everybody. My name is Adele Pantilla. I live at 111 Wendell Place. I've lived on Wendell Place for 50 years, and I truly cherish our neighborhood. My concern is for safety when walking by the six-foot fence. It's alarming when a dog, all of a sudden, is barking at you and possibly jumping against the fence when you're walking. The concern, too, is for the children that walk to Lincoln School and to the old high school. I don't know its name. But safety is very important to me. The fence would be located on the Second Street side, which is the front yard of the houses on Second. So that means when the houses on Second look out their front window, what they are going to see is a six-foot fence, which I think is sad. In my opinion, it would be an eyesore for the neighborhood. Please don't allow our beautiful neighborhood to appear as an industrial area with such a fence. You know, Second Street, we're right off of Taylor, so you would take a left on Second, and what would you see but a boxed-in, six-foot fence? My suggestion for the fence would be for it to extend north from the house line. Where the house ends, I would like to see the fence go north that way. I think that would complement the house. It would square it off, and that area on Second Street would still be open for the beauty of it. One other point, I, thinking about it, you know, you don't want your fence to be the obvious thing when you look at your house. You want your house to be your, what people see, and not such a big fence on the side. Thank you for what you do, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Petrus. And if there are no more, with that, I will close the public hearing and open it up to comments and questions from the commission. I'm sorry.
One more, maybe.
Can I ask a question?
Come up to the podium.
Yeah, if you come up to the podium real quick, please.
Hi, I'm Diane Frederick, and I live across the street at 126 Wendell Place from them. I wholeheartedly agree that putting the fence on the west side of their house would be great, but I think they have shortchanged themselves on space based on what they've put in their diagram there. If they put the fence going around the staircase, going down to their basement, and bringing it forward, like, it'd be like six feet, that would give them a lot more room. Granted, it would come a little bit farther, I mean, it wouldn't come any farther than the front of their house, but it would be the front of their house, but it would be farther from their next-door neighbors coming out. But I think that would give them a lot more space. Their dog has barked constantly, and I don't know that putting the dog on the Second Street side is going to be a good idea. I love that dog, it's a beautiful dog, and it's as friendly as can be, but it's skittish, I think. And I think it will continue to bark. That's one thing. And I think that for children going by, I think that's an issue. I've, myself, I've gone by other houses in the neighborhood in Broad Park that have a fence right up near, but within the required amount of space, and it was a see-through fence, and the dog barked constantly. And it's just hard. The dog learns to bark and not be controlled. And I think their dog is wonderful, they're wonderful people, I love them as neighbors, but I think this just has not been thought out well. And I think that, you know, we'd be happy to help them take down some of their limbs to give them more area, but if you take a look... Here, this is where...
Dan, could you speak at the podium so we can...
Yeah.
Sorry, I was just going to try and give an explanation using their house. So the bottom-left of their house, the diagram up at the end of their house, right there, right there is where the steps are going downstairs. So if they surround, if they go straight left, but they'd have to cut around their stairway, and that could give them a lot more room. And it would be an option, instead of having the fence on the Second Street side, which I don't, I am not for a privacy fence over there at all. And I just, I think they'd have more usage to the west side of their house.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, now I'm closing the public hearing. Now is it open to comments and questions from the commission? But, yeah, no more public comments, please.
So what is the distance between the side of the house and the fence line for Second Street? What is that distance between those two?
The, this corner is twenty-five-point-five, twenty-five-point-three feet.
Okay.
And twenty-nine feet from this edge to the edge of sidewalk are the right way.
Okay.
According to the survey.
I've heard the word "eyesore" thrown around quite a bit. Is the picture we have, is this, is this the fence that they intend to?
It was submitted by...
No. That's just a fence.
It's going to be a solid wood fence, but it's an AI generation from one of the speakers. Yeah, it was not produced by the city.
It's also interesting that the one person who said yes is the one most directly affected by the fence, I think, at...
Well, and again, I mean, I understand everybody's position, but I am very conscious of the fact, too, that we have approved a lot of fence variations like this. And, I mean, I do appreciate the issue that you have with the positioning of your house and your lot. Could we go back to just the overhead view again for one minute?
Which one?
I'm sorry, the overhead view with the proposed fence, the one you just hit.
That one?
Mm-hmm.
Can you go back to the rendering where you put the stick in there, too? That's where I wanted to see, I wanted to see that corner down.
Yeah, the south far, southeast corner of the fence would be approximately there. As you can see, car, like, this car parked here, you can easily see moving south along South Second Street from Wendell Place. That was up that by a city engineer, using all the traffic analysis. I drove out there myself, took this picture right at the stop. You know, the fence, edge of the fence is going to be over here, so you can clearly see traffic coming. There is no sight distance issue for vehicles.
Well, it sounds like there may be some room for compromise, too. I mean, I, again, I don't know if this is set in stone, but perhaps this is a discussion you would want to have afterwards, and we can continue this. I would love to see you come to, like, an agreement that you're all happy with. I don't know if that's even possible, but I would love to see you work on it together and, you know, rather than us make the determination, if we continue it to the next meeting, I think that might be a great idea. Is anybody opposed to having a conversation afterward? I mean, certainly not including us, but amongst yourselves to see if there's any room for compromise?
Yeah, so we've had conversations about this for the past couple of weeks, when all the letters started coming in, and more so out of principle than anything. You know, we purchased the house, we paid the property taxes, we've done a lot of work inside, now we're starting to shift our focus to the outside. You know, we feel like we're not asking for something that hasn't already been approved before. There's no safety issues from what we can tell based on the photos and the analysis done by the city, and that was our number-one concern. So we, you know, we're comfortable with our request, and, you know, we are, to us, it's quite a bit of money to get this done.
Of course.
And if we're going to spend, you know, thousands of dollars, we're going to, we're going to get what we want to get, otherwise, you know, I mean, it is what it is. But, yeah, it's mainly out of principle. You know, this is, this is what we have as far as plans, and, you know, we just look forward to hearing back from you guys and hopefully get started.
And if I may add, I just...
No, I'm sorry, when the public hearing is closed, the only people that are actually at the podium can speak. Bill, did you have a comment?
I'm...
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, I thought it was somebody in the back.
Oh.
Oh, I apologize. I thought it was someone in the last row. Yes, you most certainly can.
I just would like to say that I understand their concerns and it not being aesthetic to the streets and the other, you know, neighborhoods, but as a parent, my child's safety is a big concern for me, and being in the police department, I know that there is quite a lot of traffic going down Second Street, and I know that people aren't going to speed limit. So for me, my children being outside is a concern, and maybe my dog or my two-year-old runs onto the street and a car doesn't stop on time, that's a concern for me, and I just do not believe that a decision based on an opinion is fair. Even me as a taxpayer, someone who works for the city, I understand their concerns and everything, but I just do not agree that the decision based on whether my neighbors agree that it looks nice or not should be put over my piece of mind as a parent. That's all.
Thank you. Bill, you have a comment?
Sometimes in matters like this, new information arises. I haven't been involved in this, I'm sorry I've been, I'm actually here for Act Two, but I'm involved as city manager in budgeting for a variety of things. One of the things we've been talking about citywide is ways in which we can help people with private tree issues. There's no end to it once you start, in a way. We're pretty good at keeping, we're doing better, I think, trying to do better with the pruning of public trees, those that hang over streets and sidewalks and so forth. We have more people doing it, they're more trained at doing that. And we got some grant money from Morton Arboretum this year to help us with that. We've had a fifty-fifty tree program that's helped with planting new trees in front yards where old trees have gone, but private owners have had to deal with that, and it's pretty expensive to take down a mature tree at this point. So I, so here's the new information, that right now we're going through the city budget, and we're talking about what might be done to augment our initiative in that area, and it's something ultimately that's subject to council approval. But if there was a fifty-fifty program, I don't know if you price what it would take to thin out your trees?
To get them removed, Mr. Nicholas, it was about twelve to fifteen thousand for all three.
Thousand.
Yeah, it was, yeah, I don't know.
And is it your, may I ask one, two questions? Is it your interest to remove them or just to prune them? What do you think? You're looking at space, a square foot each.
Yes.
Seg them out?
I mean, just, the cost of it just totally turns me off of doing anything with them. Now, the quote we got was about a year ago? No, no, no. Would have been a little over a year ago before I left. I don't know if things have changed. The guy told me that because they, the power lines that run through them and back in the corner of my lot, it seems like that must be some type of tie-in with the electrical system. I'm not an arborist, I'm not an electrician, so I really have no idea. But, yeah, just hearing those numbers before I left, I just kind of, I put it out of my mind. It wasn't even...
Well, maybe it would be fruitful to, if we could take a look at both the cost and then also what might be able to be added to this, to deal with it. Mostly our issues are in the older subdivisions, both on the south side and also on the north side, North Fourteenth, North Fifteenth, that area, or Twelve. So, and those are quarter, roughly quarter-acre lots or less. And this may just speed that internal consideration. And the other question I would have, may I ask one more question?
Of course, please.
One of the most fundamental zoning considerations when you're building houses in existing neighborhoods or you're augmenting them with fences and handy huts and, you know, things that homeowners want to have, is the sightlines that you have if you're on a street. So, Dan, if you could go back to the previous one that shows the, yeah, okay, no, go back, that was good. There. So the established sightline is that, and that's Second Street, am I correct?
Right.
Okay. So what I was trying to do is shift your usable space to the west and then around the house. And it does create another zoning issue, because I believe, Dan, the fence on the west side of the house is not supposed to go in front of the adjacent house, right?
No, it can go up to the edge of the home on the side.
Well, then, then that's not an anomaly, so that's suggested that's something that would cover the walk and the, or the basement stair and then that, yeah. So gain a little bit of space there, but I was looking at the trees. I'd just like a little more time, maybe even we could get one of our arborists out to look at it and think about what that might be. Would you be willing to consider that?
It's something we would consider. At the end of the day, you know, we would like to put up this fence based on the plans that we have here, and that's where we're at.
It's not my decision.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
I have a question. As we sit here as commissioners planning and zoning, are we, to read the, are we voting on the findings of fact or are we voting on the neighborhood?
Always vote on the findings of fact, every rezoning, special use, variance.
So if we're going to do that, you know, I know that there's a lot of people here that are opposed to it, but this lack of demonstrated hardship, there is one, I think that we have voted on this five, six times before, these corner lots, they had this issue here. So I disagree with this letter that says that they haven't demonstrated a hardship because in our work prior, in the last year, five or six times, we have done that with different properties. The city engineer has done this, I, you know, can I see down the road or not? The city engineer has submitted that you can see three-hundred-and-fifty-five feet as required, so it's not a question of, I think that you can see this or not. I think that we, and we can trust our engineer that says, no, that safety requirement is there. So if we're going to treat this like we have done other fencings, now, you know, if we take this to a vote, it may not pass, but it seems like it's, like we have done before. So to be fair to the other properties that we've done...
It meets the criteria.
It does meet the criteria that's outlined for us.
So this is really curious, that the city manager and his trusted zoning partner and planning director are slightly at a different opinion here, that there is one, actually there is one finding that hasn't been proven here, and that is that the proposed variance would not have a significantly detrimental effect on the long-range development of adjacent properties. That's at least up for grabs. It's not, it's not, because of the sightline issue. So if you go, if you buy the house in the middle of that block, you do not get to see, you know, you're looking at the sidewalk maybe, but that's about all you can see. And why do people go down a wide street like that and look for a house? Because they like the view.
Mm-hmm.
It's just, it's just a complication. The city attorney, or the city engineer has opinions on a variety of things, but not on the zoning piece.
Well, when it comes to the variance, too, I mean, I think that's why we address each one of these individually, because they are not all stereotypical. I mean, there's different spaces, the different, different way that the houses sit on the lot, there's the sightlines, but from a technical standpoint, to your point, yes, I mean, it meets the criteria. I would like to see more compromise on it, but that's just my personal opinion.
As the code is written, they could, I mean, people have suggested you can line up that fence with the side of the property, correct? If they said, you know what?
Yeah, they could build the fence, six-foot eye, very in line with the house here.
They would just get a permit, and there'd be no public hearing, correct?
Right.
My question now is, how, that back fence, the one that runs parallel to Wendell, can they run that back fence with or without a permit from us? The back fence, just the back?
Right here?
No, nope, nope, right there. That one.
Yeah, this is all legal six-foot eye.
So no matter what, the people that are saying, hey, I'm going to look out my window, and alls I see is that six-foot fence, these people could build that six-foot fence with or without our, on the back, on the back portion, perhaps. So that could be built, whether or not we say no tonight, they could just go ahead and say, well, we're going to put up this ugly six-foot fence on the other side here. Right, correct?
Yeah, as I mentioned before, they could build it up to the edge of the house.
How much, how high can they build the fence on the east side?
Solid fence, six foot at max. On the east side?
On the east side.
And here?
Yep, without, without coming in.
Three foot for solid, four foot for open fence.
Okay.
Like a chain link.
And I do appreciate the fact that, again, I mean, looking down the street, as you pointed out, Bill, it's, whether you want to characterize it as an eyesore or just a, an anomaly in the street, I mean, that will block everybody's view going down, but again, we're not here to judge it on the aesthetics.
If we vote this tonight and it doesn't pass, can they come back to us again?
Well, I think they could apply for every variance, but unless they change something, that they'd have to reapply, pay a filing fee, go through the process again.
So that's the risk, if we say, okay, let's put, I'll make a motion, put this up, then if it could tilt it down, then you're back, you're stuck. Could, do you think that there's some room for compromise among the neighborhood, that if we continue this, that something can be worked out?
I, as you guys did, I read all the letters, you know, and the same concern over and over and over and over again. the same concern over and over and over and over again, seemed to be, it's gonna change the feel of the neighborhood and it's gonna be an eyesore. There was a couple of safety concerns and I, I agree with that, I mean, we shouldn't put something up that's gonna endanger the lives of other people or, you know, their families, my, whatever. But in terms of eyesore, changing the aesthetic of the neighborhood, I'm not sure that we would be able to come to a common ground that fits what we're trying to accomplish while also not being an eyesore or changing the look of the neighborhood. It's not our intention, you know, we're doing this just safety, privacy, you know, we do value our privacy. Value the safety of my kids and, um, a six-foot privacy fence accomplishes both of those at the same time, without adding anything else.
Yeah, I appreciate that and for the vast majority of it, I, I don't disagree with you, but I do understand the extension out into what would be, you know, the street area being detrimental to the people around you. And I, again, if, if you can move that fence to the left side of the house, I understand there's stairways, there's a stairway there, but if you can move that forward, you're gaining, I don't know, four by what, twenty feet, as opposed to reducing the right-hand side? So, I mean, I think there is, a- and I understand you want what you want, um, but I think there is room for compromise and, I don't know, from my personal opinion, I'd much rather see you talk to Bill and, and maybe just think about what some options are, because again, you know, to Bill's point, if we vote it down, you're gonna have to go through the process again, I, I would much rather see you have a conversation about it and see if there's any way that you can find some middle ground.
So, when you say have a conversation, we're saying have a conversation with Mr. Nicholas and then continue it? Is that, is that what you, is that what you mean?
Well, the continuance means that this would move to the next meeting and we would meet on this again. That would give you an opportunity to talk to some of your neighbors and Mr. Nicholas as well, just about, again, as an option, if that tree, um, program would be applicable for you. I mean, to me, it sounds like a great opportunity to get fresh trees in there if it actually works. But I, I think it's worth hearing him out, for sure.
Okay.
Well, and then, eh, the other thing is that I was curious too, cause, um, it seems like the, the vote of contention is really just on that Second Street side. And so, is there, is there some point between being completely in line with the house and then the proposed four foot away from the sidewalk? Is there something between the two that would be a compromise, you know, whether it's?
And now, we're four feet off, can you go, can you go six feet off?
Six feet off and throw a couple of shrubs on there, I mean, other things that we've done for similar variances have been, you know, tweaking what that distance is, adding some additional landscaping on the outside, yeah, it is an ex, it's an extra expense, but it, in the spirit of trying to make it work.
Yeah, I understand.
Um, you know, is, is there a, um, a magic number so we're not getting rid of it completely on that side? Is there, is there a setback that would be doable? Can we soften it?
Is there, is there a compromise?
Yeah.
And maybe you could present us with something that's not this IA-generated, but like, something nicer.
Or even tapering the fence height.
Yeah.
I mean, not necessarily going right to six feet, just tapering it up might help a little bit in the visual right there. So, that's what's on my mind. So, just another, again, more ideas.
I think you can take those, uh, I mean, if you work with Bill and, and on the tree issue and he's trying to get you some additional space and discussing some things out with him, I think you'll, you know, you can come up with some things, some options to show us and the neighbors, so. And that will, that would fit you and your family also, so. So, I think tableing it would be, I think we'll have a given table.
So, given what you're hearing now, what would you like? Because if you need someone to make a motion, I could make this motion for you, but you, you may get denied. And then if you're denied, you're back to square, back to the starting point. What would you like from the, the commission tonight? Would you like us to table it? Work on a compromise?
Uh, yeah, yep. Perfect. Reminder on a motion to table, we need a date, place, and time of the next meeting, which is October sixth, six P M. here at the Cal Life, so. Make sure that's in the motion, if you do that.
Good, someone?
Does anybody wanna discuss this further?
Oh, well, I just kind of assumed we had, but.
All right.
Okay, then I'll ask for a motion to, um, table a discussion until the next meeting?
October sixth.
October sixth, sorry.
I'm moving to table this discussion until October sixth.
May I have a second?
I second.
Second, by me and your grand, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Good, thanks, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item on the agenda is, uh, discussion item, planning and zoning commission roles and responsibilities. For that, we have Mr. Nicholas here.
Do you want me to?
We can, uh, yeah.
Yeah, you don't, this will be boring. Unless you brought a pillow, I wouldn't. Thank you.
Good night.
I think this is Philabom's fault, it really is.
It used to be a peaceful place.
Yeah.
I bring the crowds.
Yeah.
You're in by six, out by six twenty, watching Monday Night Football. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thanks.
Do you want me to go up there? I'm, I'm happy to if you want me to.
Yes.
Seems like a
Seems like a far away from where I am.
Unless you wanted to use your radio voice, I guess.
Do we have to wait for Dan?
Can I do this back there in the room? Can I move it up a little bit? Right there?
So, I guess the answer is yes, but you shouldn't.
I'll just stay here, I'll just stay here. Does that look good? Testing.
Well, in a way, that's, that previous item was a, a good entree to what we might briefly wanna discuss tonight. It's already seven and I don't wanna keep you into the night, but, um, I appreciate you, uh, being patient to have some conversation. What I, what I thought was maybe useful was for us all, because there's, there's a, I guess you would call it a, a chain of conversation and some decision points from the time that a petitioner comes to the city and, and talks to a staff person, whether it's Dan or me, somebody else. And then, uh, there may be other professionals getting involved, engineers, uh, people may have engineers if it's a big development and there are even more, there are attorneys, there realtors and, and so forth, bankers. And then, all of a sudden, things fall on you. It has to do with your role by statute and, and by the city ordinance is, uh, uh, with the review of different things. Tonight was, is a unique thing, because we no longer have a zoning board and the, I believe it was in the two thousand ten, Stan, when the plan commission became the hear of variances rather than the zoning board.
Uh, when they were combined, basically, zoning board. Um, yeah, I'm not sure. Around two thousands, early two thousands.
Fifteen years, probably.
Before I got here.
And when it was just a zoning board of appeals, it was a quasi-judicial body and we had to have a court reporter and talk about the, the integral or central role of findings of fact, that was it. Because, uh, depending on what the, the court or what the zoning board determined, the only route of appeal didn't go to the city council, it went to this, the county clerk, court. And, uh, and there, the, the usual rules of evidence had to apply. So, if the zoning board didn't do its job in, in the findings of fact, it subjected, uh, the, the city to, I guess, it's, some of it's a legal risk, because there'd be costs in defending it, if that's what the city chose to do. But also reputation risks, so if it was happening frequently, then people wonder, how do you do anything in the city of DeKalb? So, needless to say, the, the zoning board of appeals is always extraordinarily conservative. Those findings of fact, there are usually four, for, for variances, had to be met in, in every excruciating detail. I'm pleased that we are where we are now, because what you saw tonight occurred and was able to occur because of, uh, a new arrangement. There's still our findings that the commission has to consider. In, in, uh, other ways, uh, findings, as, Bill, may I call you, rather than say commissioner, can I call you Bill?
You can call me Bill.
Bill mentioned earlier, uh, findings of fact still apply to, uh, development agreements, uh, that usually have a zoning piece to them. You're gonna develop five hundred acres and that land is gonna be rezoned from ag to industrial. The commission isn't concerned with whether the city is going to give property tax abatement to that, that's not your role. But you are concerned about the zoning piece of it, so even though, uh, four fifths of the development agreement don't touch on your purview, the zoning is there. And then there's usually an annexation piece, and then there's an actual rezoning ordinance that comes your way, so you touch on it twice. Same thing, kind of, but you touch on it twice and that's just the way that sequence goes. So, um, so what is, is your role? And, and I think sometimes we, we just need to have conversation about how that works and, and same at the council level, same at the staff level. Uh, we can't promise anything at the staff level. We can say in recent years, we have been embracing X, Y, and Z, but, uh, we don't have a vote. And the, the final vote goes to the elected officials who are the corporate authority and, uh, their, their purview is a little broader. They have to be concerned about the findings of fact that came to them from you, from us to you, to them. But they also have to be concerned because they have constituencies. We don't, you don't, we don't, at the staff level, but they're elected by people from wards and from the city at large. And so, they have the purview and in law, generally, there's some latitude for them to say, I don't like it because it's blue. You can say it. There aren't too many courts that would throw it out. The courts, uh, and juries in, in a courtroom are representative of the same constituents and, and elected, they elected. So, uh, what does, what does this have to do with what happened a couple of weeks ago? I think it just points up that we need to, from time to time, look at our roles and look at our responsibilities. In the case of, uh, the, the main points of difference had to do with the findings of fact, where there are findings that, uh, represented the voices of the property owners who were concerned about the development across the tree line. Uh, and as you look at those four findings, uh, there was testimony given about Bitcoin, about a variety of things that didn't have to do with those four pieces. And those pieces were pretty clear and they're in, they're handed down from state statute to you as a plan commission and your, your obligation. And then promulgated again in your, your U D O., which is your development basis. And, and the findings were, were pretty simple, so did the proposed development have a detrimental effect on the long-range development of adjacent properties? That engenders some conversation, I understand. But it really got down to whether the buffer was enough. But there wasn't so much conversation about the nature of the buffers, there was other things. I'm afraid that this might happen, I'm afraid that that might, might happen, but that was outside of what the facts were, what we knew to be the facts. With the proposed rezoning warrant, uh, different land uses, because of the length of time the property had been vacant, I wasn't involved in the conversation until it got to council, but we knew that it had been, uh, an area that was designated for industrial for a long time. The owners, the current owners, uh, own the, the asphalt batch plant just to the north. Years ago, before there was a housing development, they could have used that area for any number of industrial things. They didn't need to at the time, now they wouldn't think of it, because there are houses there and there would be noise if they brought their stuff in. But they thought, nothing could be quieter in their mind than a solar farm. Maybe part of the problem was, we talked about it initially and the city staff did, uh, this is a data center, well, so we had two buildings that are not much bigger than two large garages that are going to be air-cooled with a, a standard rooftop A C. And the only water that's gonna go to them is because the city's interpretation of the plumbing code said, when you have buildings of this size, you're gonna have to have them monitored. Somebody's going, male or female, is gonna be here looking at lines and wires and server inserts and they're gonna have to use a bathroom. We don't want them going into the tree line to do that, frankly. So, uh, we insisted on them having a lab and a stool in each of the buildings. But that's it, there's not water for cooling. And there are, there are issues with solar farms, to be sure, uh, especially when you plant them on ag land, because no matter what kind of vegetation you have under these panels and how well-developed those, those plants are, any farmer will tell you, you're gonna have volunteer weeds that you're gonna have to deal with. Thistle never goes away, corn stalks here and there. So, it's, it's a maintenance issue, but it's not an insurmountable maintenance issue. And is that in violation of a, of a finding of fact? Not really. It, it's a speculation, of course, but it, not really. And finally, uh, would, uh, adequate public facilities exist? And yes, we, we have a water main that's, uh, proximate to that, uh, there's, there's gas, there's electric, there's, there's, uh, even a sewer line for the, the bathrooms that would be put in. So, that's why we recommended it to you and, and, uh, so it was your call on, on the findings of fact, but then it went to the council and then the council, again, can look at the findings of fact and hopefully, uh, that's very important to them and it's supposed to be in law as well. But, uh, has a little more latitude to do even what you did tonight. It could have said, uh, can we have some more conversation about this? Can we postpone this? Can we? So, uh, it's, it's a give and take, up to a point. After the, uh, the meeting, I, I talked to the people who were the project, uh, the proposers of this and, uh, they, they wanna be in DeKalb, so they're looking, still. They haven't given up on the idea of their, their original, uh, choice, but they only have two courses here. One is that somebody from, and it would have to have had, happened tonight, somebody from the prevailing side, which was no, would have to move to reconsider and then they'd have to get a second. And then there could be discussion and you might end up at the same vote, but that would have, so, and the prevailing side was no, so that'd be two nos to say, yes, let's get up, move in second. That doesn't usually happen, uh, and it shouldn't happen unless there's new information that was not available at the time of the previous discussion, that's typically the justification. Finally, uh, there's always the, the legal route, but, uh, all you did was review, you didn't take a vote, so. So, that's, that's basically it, I, it, it's, uh, I, I feel, and I'm responsible for our, our staff support, this isn't about Dan, it's about, uh, all of us that are involved. We had an engineer involved, we had, we had, uh, we talked to the sanitary district, we talked to others, county and so forth, and maybe somewhere along the line, maybe we could have talked a little bit more about whether this is data center or not and is this? I think the buildings were pushed as far south and away from the, the I think the buildings were pushed as far south and away from the residences and, so, uh, that, that's really the only reason I was on here. I just wanted to say I didn't get to be here and, and I'm sorry I wasn't here and it wouldn't have made any difference because I wouldn't have spoken. But I appreciate what you do and it's not easy. Your, your volunteers, you come here and, and you deal with tough issues every couple of weeks.
We're volunteers?
I forgot to tell you that. You were looking at a check. It's not going to happen. So that's all I wanted to say. Nobody did anything wrong. It's a, and, and there were some comments, I think, that could have been read that way. I, I didn't make those comments.
I have a question, Bill, if that's okay. So as we sit here as commissioners, because I did have that thought as we were here last time. I mean, are we sitting here checking out the, you know, Dan's written up a report. Are we saying, yes, the finding of facts have been met and then voting accordingly? Is that what we're supposed to be doing?
Yeah, but I think you're probably thinking to yourself now, how do we relate to people who are in the audience? I mean, these are people, we, it is two things. It's important for us to know our community, that informs our judgment. The, the facts, though, define the course of your vote. And I think it's important to explain to the people in the audience, and, and you do that, Mr. Chair, we need to maybe make it crystal clear, sharp that this is, even before there's testimony and so forth, tonight, we have a meeting, welcome to the meeting, here are some things you should know, ba-boom, 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 and then get to, in addition to whether you can speak or not speak. But it's, uh, here's our role, just in case you did not know. And most people will say, I didn't know that. I didn't, I, I just didn't know.
So then I'm, then we are, I'm correct, then we are supposed to be sitting here saying?
What you said earlier tonight was absolutely correct. You're here to define the findings of fact.
All right. So, so then my next question, if I can ask it, is why do we have a public hearing here then? Why are we doing this?
Uh, well, statute requires certain, certain things. You have public hearings at, the council has public hearings on, on other things. So that's just the way it is.
Okay. So we're making, so, yeah.
So let me, so last thing is, what's the context? Why is there a plan commission in the first place? And the context has to do, particularly in the state of Illinois, with Chicago. Some of the, as you know, if you like architecture in, in Chicago, we've, we had some just, you know, world historic architects from the late 19th into the 20th century building things. And about the same time, we had some world historic plant, land planners. And there's Walter Dean Burnham is like the dean of land planning in, in the 20th century. And his, and, and his, his famous remark is, make no small plans. So he had a great vision for doing things, which later gave rise to kind of a, a social political movement to make sure that not only Chicago, but other cities in the state looked at comprehensive land use plans. Before you have a, a big sewer trough going through your downtown or something, you know, an open sewer or something like that. And, and we were so in love with the industry in the late 19th century, when finally people would work and so forth, that a lot of that happened. And then, you know, Chicago for the last hundred years has been trying to undo that, save some stuff, but then undo a lot of the, the incompatible pieces, architecturally speaking and land use wise. So at, at our level, the, the state statute is designed for you to tell us whether we're departing from this.
Okay.
That's not the council's role, that's your role. And you could say, like this thing we had tonight, but it doesn't really rise to a land use plan. And you're, they weren't proposing industrial, they weren't proposing commercial or a high-rise residential or anything like that. They're talking about a fence, which became something else.
All right, I have one more question, if that's okay. Did you say that the people that own the, that property are still interested in DeKalb?
Yes.
And then we could, could we reopen this up if somebody from, that voted against it?
Not now.
Not now, you can't?
Has to be at the next regular meeting.
Isn't this the next regular meeting?
But you do, you have to publish that for it to be an open meeting 48 hours in advance. You can't do that.
Oh, so then you, you, so then if, if I was sitting here saying, boy, I voted wrong, then I have to go to Dan and say, I want to, I want to reopen this?
You, yeah, you could have, but you can't now, so.
Okay.
So when we're looking at the findings of fact, the public can introduce other facts?
Uh, they can. They, they can say, I've heard you, uh, uh, in the hearing part. You know, they can't, it can't be a back and forth dialogue. Once you, parliamentary rules come into play then, once the chair closes, unless this group as a whole decides to reopen the hearing. There can't just be back and forth.
That's right, yeah, that was my fault.
But you're supposed to listen. That, that's where people do count. You, like, what if somebody had said in the back what I said about the trees? And said, you know what? And well, somebody was hinting at it, saying, you know, we're going to get together in the neighborhood here and we're going to help you with those trees. That'd be an interesting fact and it would have helped with, it would have supported the idea of, of postponing. So that, that's good. And what would be another fact that, you know, somebody says, look, you want to, you, you want to see this large area of land developed? I can tell you, my grandfather used to farm this land and there is a X underneath, you know, 10 feet down. That would be important to know. Things like that.
But I, I think that when, when we're listening to the public, I, I'm always trying to hear the public, right? Because we have the finding of fact from the city. City has done all this work, suggested the, the motion and everything. But, you know, I want to make sure that the people felt heard, right? Because sometimes we just, I mean, I've been here where we just, hey, we heard, okay, let's vote. Whatever you say, get out of here. But I, I, I like to ask whoever's presenting, did you hear the questions, you know? Well, they want this address, they want this. And it gives them an opportunity, if it's not been presented, to present something that, you know, that, that the people can hear and.
I think you should continue to do that. There's nothing wrong with that at all. But when it comes time to make the decision, in your collective opinion, if some of the, you know, say it went on for an hour, a lot of, a lot of people have a lot of ideas, but you're trying to narrow it down to what is it that we can actually affirm to send forward? And it may not be this or that. And, and the Bitcoin is, is one, so there was a gentleman, I think he came, same gentleman came to the council meeting and said, I, you know, I'm against it. Well, I'm not for it, I don't even understand it. But I do know that there's hundreds of billions of dollars invested in that and there is trading that goes on in the New York Stock Exchange and then now digitally, information is apparently being mined on, in, in data centers around the world. So because people have a claim, like a stock and bond and so forth, and, and, and everything is so digitally preserved now that who knows what's going through every data center in the country? You know, all these phones, I got two phones on me now and laptops and all the rest of that. It's just burgeoning. So that's why these data centers keep growing and getting bigger and why we have to ask ourselves about power and water. All that is absolutely appropriate. And we have to do that on our end because we're just DeKalb here. We don't, we don't tie into Lake Michigan here, we're, we're on our own. But it's not relevant to that, that particular petition to annex and that petition to rezoning and, and so forth.
So as, as the new guy, I'm, I'm a little confused about findings of fact because like the, the first, first question here, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations. Fact? No, it's not. There's no way to.
Gives you some room to make a, yeah.
Say a fact.
Well, it's, it's written by legal minds who've had the experience of, is this me?
I think so.
That was me.
Is that echoing for you?
It is.
A little bit.
It's better if you sit over there.
Anyway, legal minds that have been on both sides of this question. There are attorneys that will represent cities and attorneys that represent petitioners and, and opposition that may arise. So that's written pretty general. Because you can't anticipate every circumstance, but it, it, the key words are adjoining properties. And you know that instinctively because you, you have an adjoining property, something like that. And that, but then the test is pretty significant. Can't just be, you know, like what side of the house they put their garbage. Cannot, you know, that's not a zoning question. It's a personal preference.
Would it benefit, wouldn't it benefit the petitioner to have some kind of town hall with the people, you know, an opportunity to let the people know, you know, and get the questions that we got last time before they come here, you know, to kind of give an idea?
So sometimes here's what we do, if it's a big one, like when it was Meta, we did a dry run, we, we couldn't say the name. It was called Ventus Services at the time. But do you remember, it was in March, we ran it through, so everybody, and, and we were pretty clear that this isn't just a game, this isn't just a warm up. This is, there is something out there and we can't name them yet. And they would like to see if we're serious about, and, and what are the conditions in which they would be annexed and so forth. So we, we had a development agreement, we had an annexation and so forth. Turned out, then we came back and did something almost identical and it's several months before the, the real thing came. Well, they're both real, but the second one was an improvement and it kind of wiped out the first one. And now it's exactly what they want to see and what we want to see. But that got a lot of conversation in the community. What, what, part of it was, I wonder what it is? But the other thing was, are we ready for that? Why here? Good questions. And, and questions, we have the benefit of asking ourselves months sometimes before, if it's a big project, before it ever gets here. And I've thought for years about how do we make that known? I, I went every month to the Abton Township Board meetings for a year before Meta came in because it was going to be the first big thing in Abton Township. It wasn't, it's not in DeKalb Township, but it was annexed to the city, so property tax will come to the city. But I, I couldn't say much, but I could just say, you have to start thinking about what you're going to do with the property tax that's going to come your way. And it's been an interesting democratic discussion down there because they went from having a road budget of about, say, less than a hundred thousand a year to four times that. So now, are you thinking about paving all your roads? Be careful what you wish for because at some point you have to repave those roads. So, you know, all these questions come in and then are you thinking about just because your levy can be higher that it should be higher? Or, or, you know, should people who are paying a relatively little bit of tax pay even relatively less? Or should they, you know what I mean? So all those questions come in, but you don't have to talk about them. You could tell us anytime you want, like twice a year, we could have a, how are we doing? Where do we stand? What's coming? What's, what are you working on?
We do have, I'll point out, the Donata Solar, we did a concept plan. In January, it's probably what you're talking about, an early feedback to a applicant, which is no filing fee. And we did that in January with Donata Solar and there was positive comments from the commission to move forward. We had a few neighbors there, but that's a feature, a concept plan that one can choose to do to get some early feedback without spending a lot of time at it. But, so that's available.
And remember the Golden Farm down there off of Peace and just south of the Peace Road interchange? So we went through it with a family and then we went through the amendment process with the, the company that bought the family's farm after it was annexed into the city. So there was more discussion over the same ground, basically. We, we just haven't, we don't have, except for the last four or five years, we have no history of having these challenges to our planning. It's just usually, 2005 was the last time before 2022. And before that, it was 1969. So, and then we were going to have, the downtown plan was that, was closed. It would be like State Street in Chicago, it was closed. So we're going to reroute the traffic in a circle around the town.
That sounds great.
Wouldn't have helped you that much. Anyway, I, I think the planning you do is superior to any that I've ever had the occasion to, to work with. So you spend a lot of time thinking about stuff. So I, I'm delighted to work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the refresher. Anything else for staff reports for the next meeting?
Yep, next meeting, October 6th, we'll have the hearing from tonight. No other items at this time for that agenda.
Okay. Then I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Second, way of Flaherty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.